Okay, it's 5:30. Welcome to the work session meeting. This is February 1st, 2021. Ms. Solano, you're up.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, councilors and Mayor Gradisar. I'm here this evening to present some city updates as well as answer council questions. The first item I'd like to confirm is a date of the upcoming city council work retreat. It is final scheduled on Saturday, February 27th. It will be held there in the chambers. We'll get to work soon on the agenda. We're still have a couple of councilors who have not returned a survey that Mr. Chairman had requested that they complete. So as soon as that's available, we'll send a draft agenda out to all of you. Next, I would like to take a moment to thank Mr. John Rodriguez. His temporary position as Director of COVID-19 Communications concluded this past Friday due to the funding expiration of the coronavirus relief dollars. John led the city's COVID communication for the past several months. He worked in getting out press releases, media advisories, press conferences, all the social media connected with COVID-19, as well as coordinating with the Health Department and other community public information officers. We thank John and would wish him well in the future. The next update that I have is regarding the five-star certification program. There is a slide that will go along with how our community can access the information about the five-star program and which businesses have been certified. There you see the website of supportingpueblo.com with backslash five star. There to date have been 46 applications. Two of them were withdrawals and 19 were certified as of early afternoon today. So if you access that website and scroll to the bottom, you will see each of the businesses that have been certified of restaurants of particular interest will allow restaurants to operate at the level higher than our current COVID dial color of orange. They operate in the yellow color, which provides for 50% capacity or 50 people for indoor dining. And so that program is going really well. It is definitely a community enjoying effort. And we'll continue to see the certified businesses list grow. The next update that I have has to do with the COVID-19 vaccinations. This morning I attended the unified messaging meeting and learned some information with respect to the clinics this week. There is no vaccination clinic today. There was not one tomorrow. There is not one scheduled. But the largest vaccination clinic yet to date held in Pueblo is scheduled for Wednesday. This is pretty fluid information, but just as a few minutes ago, the press release from the Pueblo County Department of Public Health and Environment planned for nearly 1,500 vaccinations on Wednesday. It will, it will complete the 70 and above currently on a list to receive vaccinations. So anyone who is of course over 70 is still eligible. And they begin opening up registration for 65 and above at the following website and/or telephone number, www.pueblovaxnow.com or by calling 719-583-4444. When it is your turn, each individual's turn, they receive a recorded message confirming the day and date and then a range of time to get their vaccine at the Pueblo Mall website. Let me see. They plan to begin vaccinating the 65 and over the week of February 15th. So registration will open now. Vaccination for 65 and over will begin on February 15th. Wednesday is vaccination largest clinic still set for age 70 and above. And the last update that I have for you today has to do with accessing videos and Zoom recordings of city council work sessions and city council meetings. The televised nights of work session and city council meetings are recorded by our partnership with Pueblo Community College and the Center for New Media. Those both of the city council work session and the city council meeting recordings will be available, could be Wednesday, but perhaps Thursday of the week after the meeting. It takes a few days to to put it all together and to post it onto the website. Because we have integrated Zoom meetings, the non-televized work sessions have not traditionally been available to citizens, but because of Zoom recordings now, each of the non-televized nights are being recorded. The recording will be downloaded. It's recorded to the cloud. It'll be downloaded and posted on the city website and will be available for viewing two or three days after the city council work session. So tonight will be recorded and we will check to see, is it taking till Wednesday? Or is it Thursday following the meeting that citizens will be able to access the Zoom recording of the meeting? That concludes my updates. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? Anybody here?
Laura? Oh, sorry.
Laurie, go ahead.
Oh, Laura, I just wanted to thank you for getting those work sessions online. I just wanted to thank you for that.
Councilor Schilling.
Laura, I don't think you can see me. I got the short chair. I'm wondering if maybe we could have seven chairs up here that work. Is that possible? Or fix the ones that don't?
I'll put that request in with Tracy and Darren.
You can see me.
Thank you, sir.
You can handle that, please, or somebody?
I can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Flores.
Laura, I did get the retreat date, which is February 27th. Could you tell me the times that we're allotting that day? Because it's a Saturday, isn't it?
It is a Saturday, the last Saturday of February, sir. The agenda, the draft agenda will be to all of you. So the time is not yet finalized. Likely to begin at 8:30 in the morning for a coffee and planning for the real, the meeting to actually take place at 9:00 a.m.
Okay.
It will be held on Zoom, so it will be recorded.
Thank you, Laura.
Looking at Councilor Schilling, it reminds me of that comedian, Tim Conway, when he was the jockey and stuff like that. I don't know who remembers that. I guess I'm too old.
I've had short jokes all my life. I've heard them all.
Anyway, Laura, thank you for the report on the retreat. Please, to the other councilors, if you have not turned in your your information and what you want to see on the agenda, don't be mad when you don't have on what you want on it, you know? We need participation from everybody. That's very important. It was great information on the certified program, the five-star certified program. So one of the questions I have, Laura, is, you know, it's getting, it's getting kind of old here in council chambers to just look out and see no one with no staff or anything here, but I will commend Chief Davenport for being here tonight. Thank goodness for that. But with the dial going down and with these can't city council become five-star certified and we get at least 50% occupancy in this office, I mean, in these chambers and start getting staff to come?
Mr. Chairman, I'll ask the mayor to please respond to that request.
Well, Mayor, you're there. Can I ask you?
Sure. I, you know, probably we could do something without it being five-star certified. But, you know, I sort of want to be cautious at this point still, you know, with what's going on in the world and the variants of this virus that are getting out there. I think we got to be careful and just not take any chances. So we'll play it. We'll play it by ear in terms of, you know, when staff comes back to chambers and does presentations personally. I've told them that if they're more comfortable doing it on Zoom, that that's, that's the way they can do it. So, yeah, we'll work through that.
Thank you for the consideration. And then the last thing I want to ask, and I'm sure we've had this conversation before, but on, on non-regular session work, work, work sessions like tonight, why can't they be on Facebook, Facebook Live? I mean, these are important meetings that need to be transparent, open to the public. And whether it's a work session on an off, off Monday or not, I just don't know the reason why we're not at least on Facebook Live.
Mr. Chairman, we'll look into that with the recording and streaming it live.
That would be great. Thank you. Any other questions? Laurie, are you okay? All right, we'll go to number two on the agenda, which is the Street Repair Utility Fund, the Highway User Transportation Fund, Plan Street Repairs and Road Assessment Report. Mr. Akri, are you available?
Yeah, I sure am. Thank you.
Hey, glad to have you. Good to see you.
Yeah, good, good to see all of you, too. It's good evening to everybody. And again, thanks for having me. I want to just present our current 2021 program, you know, where we are currently and then where we're headed. So I have a PowerPoint presentation. Is that something somebody can queue up for you guys?
Yes, we're getting it up right now.
Okay. All right. So, so as I said, this is the 2021 Pueblo Road Rehab Update. And again, you know, I'm Tony Akri. I'm spearheading that project. Can we go to the next slide, please? The, the items I want to focus on, first of all, is the scope and then the location for the roads that we're gonna, we're gonna rehab. I'll give you a project update, you know, where we are with contracts, current work is being performed, when we'll start and when we're projected to finish. I'd like to touch on the road selection process once again, just so everybody can see why we selected these particular roads. From there, I'll take you through how we're going to handle the construction, again, to minimize impacts and, and just get it done as quickly as possible. And then I know that Prairie Avenue is, is a, it's an important road. It's on everybody's radar. So we'll take some time to talk about that. And then hopefully I can answer any other questions you may have. So our, our scope for this year includes nine roads. The first three, which are 15th, Menecua and Paul Harvey on this list, they were pushed from 2020 to be incorporated into, you know, into this year's program. And then we added six additional roads, which are Hudson, 24th, Northern, Broadway, Grand and High Street. And the, the specific sections, you know, the areas that we're focusing on, it's listed on the slide. You can kind of see the areas. And the total amount of work, it's, you know, just about $4.2 million that, that will be, you know, conducting this year. I wanted also show you these locations graphically, so you get an idea of where the roads are throughout the city. I mean, we tried to, you know, cover the, well, we just, I wanted to cover a broad area, but all these roads fall within the critical guidelines for rehab. So if we go to the next slide to get us up to speed on where we are. We're currently building the curb ramps for all of these roads. Council approved a contract with Doug Vaughn LLC for this work back last year on October 27th. We started that construction in November of last year and we're projected to have about 75 to 80% ready in April and we'll finish up, you know, before Martin Marietta gets to those roads to have everything ready for them. That contract amount is the 1,138,800. And the actual road milling and overlay contract is with Martin Marietta. That contract was approved on November 23rd. And that amount is the about 3.7 million. So we're moving forward. We've already prepared the notice to proceed and that has a start date of February 15th. That allows the contractor to, you know, begin ordering materials and scheduling and setting things up, getting the permits they need so that they can mobilize on, on April 1st. And we're in a real good position to do that. And then again, we expect all of this work to be done by Thanksgiving of this year. It should track, again, these projects are all milling overlay with the exception, exception of Northern. So they tend to go a little faster. So touching on the, you know, why we selected these particular roads, this is the, the pavement condition index chart that, that, you know, we established last year. And in this graph, you see where the arrows are. Those are the roads that we've selected. And you can see that most of them fall within that critical range. So they're not too far damaged, but they definitely need repair. The two I'd like to call out that are slightly above that critical range, the first one is, is Northern. But the 70 on there for the PCI is a little misleading because we're only working on Northern East. And that section of Northern is, is in a lot worse shape. That PCI is around 50. So it's in that, you know, the critical area. And Broadway, since the analysis in January of 2020, it has deteriorated further and dropped to around 55. So again, it's, it's targeted in that critical range. If we can go to the next slide, please. So the, the approach, you know, how we're gonna, we're gonna perform the construction, it's very similar to last year. We're gonna maintain business and residential access, you know, throughout the project. Also, life and safety access. We'll make sure that one, our fire department and the police department, they know which roads will be on, you know, at certain times. If there are any short-term closures, we'll inform everybody. But with the milling overlay, it's, it's a lot more manageable because we don't, those roads are still, you can drive on them. You know, we've stripped off a couple inches of asphalt, but there's still a hard surface. So we don't need to block anything or shut it down. We are going to consider night and weekend work again, just because it, it speeds things up and lessens the impact to businesses and residents. And finally, we probably will work on multiple roads at one time since all of these are milling overlay. At a council meeting a couple of months ago, there was a question that came up about, you know, what the costs were for 2020. How did the unit costs work out? And, you know, where did things come in? So I wanted to provide this graphic just so you can see that we get the most bang for our buck with milling overlay. And that's why we're able to, to knock out, you know, the number of roads this year as compared to last year, simply because we had two that required a great deal of rebuilding. And you can see, I think you can see the cost. It's a little cut off, but I believe milling overlay falls right around $20 a square yard. Where your rebuilds are up to $40 to $45 a square yard. So it's considerably more. And if you can go to the next slide, please. So again, I know that, that the most questions that are asked to all of you are probably about Prairie Avenue. So I wanted to take a little time and kind of let you know where we are. Obviously, it is in one of the, the worst conditions in the city. That, you know, that also equates to it being an extremely expensive fix. Right now, we should have a Department of Transportation grant that will be issued this month. And it's designated specifically to do the curb ramp repairs. So we're currently surveying, believe we're out surveying these ramps and we'll begin design so that we can get out to bid this summer and hopefully start that work late summer and work on it, you know, through next year so that the road is then ready for rebuilding in 2022. The challenges with this, the, the survey and geotechnical information came back that not only did the pavement fail, but the sub, subsurface failed. So we have to basically rebuild almost the entire section of road. And as I mentioned before, it, it certainly elevates the cost. So the, the estimates that I've looked at basically require, it's probably going to be right around three and a half million dollars, which would absorb the entire year's HUTF fund allocated for, for road overlay. So that's just something to keep in mind if, if, you know, we want to pursue this and, and knock it out. We're also going through and looking at, at a phased approach. You know, if we can't get everything at one time, then we have certain critical areas designated that are worse than others. And we may be able to, you know, work something out to just do certain sections. Next slide, please. So that, you know, that hopefully gives you a broad level perspective of where we are and what we're trying to accomplish. And, you know, I want to open it to questions to anybody that may have, have some.
Thank you for the report, Mr. Akri. Questions? Councilor Flores, I just wanted to understand, we, we have our own maintenance repair employees that work on a variety of just emergency situations where an excavator might cut into a road. And is there any oversight of that department with under your purview, Tony, or is that, does that work separately? And the two are not connected?
Yes, sir. They, they're kind of independent of one another. The, the, the work that I've done with them and actually all groups, because you bring up an excellent point as far as, you know, we don't want to rebuild or overlay and then have Board of Water Works or somebody come in and excavate a brand new road. So I've provided all that information to all of the, you know, the partner groups, wastewater, Board of Water Works and our traffic department. Just to make sure that our schedule is solid and we're not going to be destroying any of the work that, that we're going to be doing in the next couple of years. But the, the actual traffic division, it's my understanding that they focus on maintenance. So they'll be out there patching a pothole here and there. They'll be crack sealing, you know, you'll, you'll see the, it looks like shiny glue, basically, and it's spider webbed throughout many of the roads in the city. That at least cracks seals to, to prevent water from getting in those roads and, and extends the life a little longer. But again, it's independent of, of what we're doing here.
The reason I was asking the question is, it would appear that maybe we could do a better job of maintaining our roads if we had like a, what, what a milling machine and maybe, you know, has anybody looked at whether or not we have the proper equipment within that department that they could do a better job if they had more modernized equipment?
And I'm sorry, sir, I don't have an answer to that. I mean, certainly it's something that I'll look into and, you know, can get you some information as to what our capabilities and capacities are.
Dennis, if I, if I may add, I had Stephen, I may add that we do have some equipment that does some of that overwork, overlay work on, in the house. Just we don't have enough staff to do it. So we'd have to, you know, relook at doing that. But it's been, I think it's been looked at in the past. But something we can, can relook at, you know, going forward. If that's something, I know Andrew Hayes, the new director is listening in tonight. And it's going to be one of those discussions that he can have with his staff and kind of re, relook at that, what, if that's possible.
And then there's another, there's another piece to this, too. The various excavation contractors that we hire, whether they're installing water lines or electrical lines or whatever, some, I don't know how that operates, but sometimes they leave a mess. And I know several places, ironically on Prairie, that they, I think they replaced a lot of water lines there or they could have been sewer lines and, and then left. And I know that our city department went back to try to repair that, but it was, it never was the same at that point. And I'm not sure that the use and the weather caused it. If it, I kind of have the impression that the contractors left it in really bad shape after they tore up the roads. So I just wanted to bring that up, that we maybe look at that a lot more in the future to make sure that any contracts that we have, that it's the roads put back to its original condition. Thank you.
Let me just add, if I can there, that whenever anybody cuts into a road, Stephen, you might correct me if I'm wrong. With the exception of the Board of Water Works or any contractor who's doing work for the Board of Water Works, any other contractor that, that cuts into the road is required to pay a pavement impact fee, recognizing that, you know, once you damage the road, you're never going to be able to get it back to where it was normally. Now, I haven't tracked really that pavement impact fee, but my understanding is that they're required to pay that fee at the time they, they get a permit to cut into the road.
We're correct. They pay a fee upfront, then we go out and we measure how big a, a cut really took place and what square footage needs to be repaired. And then they get billed accordingly. And then they have to make up that difference. But they do put money down, pay a fee.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilor Tencio. It's my understanding that the projects for 2021 are set? All the streets are going to be done?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That's, that's correct.
Okay. I asked that because my suggestion would be on Prairie Avenue. Even if it does take up most of the budget for a year to do it within a year, because a phased approach would be two or three years long and disturbing that area for that length of time is not a good idea as far as I'm concerned. So we might look at doing Prairie Avenue in one year. That would be my suggestion.
Can I, can I just add with respect to Prairie Avenue? One of the, one of the things we've been exploring is, you know, there are parts of Prairie Avenue from Pueblo Boulevard to probably Jones or at least Lakeview where the utility lines are above ground. And at this point, at least, some of those utility lines are right in the middle of sidewalks and things like that. So we have approached, in fact, Black Hills is working on plans to underground those utilities on Prairie Avenue. Number one, to make the sidewalks more usable and make it more attractive there. They've, they've sort of come up with a cost estimate and have come up with some routing about where, where that goes. It's, you all recall that we pay every month on our electric bill an undergrounding fee. And I've forgotten the amount of money that's in that undergrounding fund now, but it's adequate based on the cost numbers we got from Black Hills to pay for the undergrounding. So my hope is that as we're looking at rebuilding Prairie Avenue and these curb ramps and those kinds of things, that we try to coordinate this effort. And if we can get these utilities undergrounded as well, at the same time, before we put down a new road, that's a preferable course of action than, you know, putting in a new road and then undergrounding the fees, the utilities at some point in the future. So that's one of the reasons why Perry's taken so long. But I've sort of made it clear to everybody that Perry's got to be done in 2022. And we have to do whatever it takes to get that done in terms of the undergrounding of those utilities, the trails that we're working on with, with CDOT and the grants there to get over to Menecua Lake. So I feel confident that we'll get that done in 2022. But it is going to take some money. And, but I agree. I think we ought to try to get it done in one year rather than spread it out.
Great. Thank you very much. Councilor Brown.
Well, I'd just like to compliment the staff because it seems like we're doing a better job of making sure the utilities are done before we overlay the street. So we have, we have to go back through and turn it up again. So hopefully it'll last a lot longer. Thank you.
Councilor Schilling.
Tony, the elephant in the thing that you just did was, to me, it said annual appropriation required.
required forever. I mean, is there a time limit? Do you have a cost? Or would this be an ongoing yearly appropriation like curb cuts and stuff?
Counsel Ms. Shillen, can you, I, I'm sorry, I'm not quite following you. Are you specifically talking about Prairie or?
Uh, no. On one of your, um, overlays or little slides, it said requires annual uh, contribution from the city.
Tony, if you may, I, I can answer that.
Was that, is that annual for a year, for 30 years, for the rest of your life? What does that mean?
Stephen, let me take a crack at it first. And, and, you know, based on the, the number of, of arterials that we have within the city, this is a, it's an ongoing process. You know, it, it's, it's just the natural life cycle of infrastructure. So, you know, I look at that as, as annually, we're going to, we're going to continue to fix roads. And, and obviously it's dependent upon, you know, whether the tax remains and, and we have the resources to do this work. So I, I guess my assumption was just that right now, the, the current setup is such that, you know, we're getting about three and a half million dollars per year to put forward, um, to fixing these roads. And, and that, that was my approach.
I misunderstood. I thought you were talking about the slideshow to Prairie and Prairie was going to require annual contributions to pay for the initial, the original cost. We couldn't pay for it in a year. We have to pay it for over 10 years? Or are we going to be able to pay all the costs for Prairie to be done in one year, in that year?
If, if, based on the current estimates, um, that I, that I prepared and then the current market, assuming that the market doesn't change significantly and prices increase, the, um, I believe that Prairie to rebuild will be about three and a half million dollars. So that's basically one year. Um, it's, it's that, that amount within one year, it would all go to Prairie and I believe we can, we can knock the whole thing out.
Okay. Thank you. It's not like 20 million. It's going to take us years to do. Thank you.
Okay.
Counsel Winner, do you have anything?
I don't. Thank you, Tony.
I have a question on when you gave the costs on, uh, the millwork and overlay and you put that slide up and you said it was so much cheaper to do. Then I looked at Eagle Ridge, which was half a mile and it cost more than when they, uh, redid the whole road. Why was Eagle Ridge so high?
I, I'm sorry. I meant to, I meant to comment on that, um, on that slide. You, you know, Eagle Ridge is the, it's the, um, it's got the highest level of service of any road in the city. We get more traffic in that section that we repaired than anywhere else. And because of that, the traffic control was exceptionally tricky. And we could only mill certain sections, pave it, let it set up and then swap back. So the time involved and then the traffic control is what really drove the cost up on that.
So it was substantial?
Yep. If, um, I'm sorry, I have a slide in front of me, but I believe it was about double, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was about double or more. And that answers the question. I agree with Counsel Atencio and the mayor. Obviously Prairie Avenue needs to get done and it needs to get done soon. And I would certainly support doing that all in one year and getting it over with. Uh, the last question I have, and this may be for Mr. Hernandez, but I saw that we spent $4 million in 2020. And my question is of the $4 million we spent in 2020, how much money came from the street repair utility? And Mr. Hernandez is here, so if...
Yeah, I'm sorry. I don't have those numbers with me.
No, I'm, I'm asking Mr. Hernandez to give me those numbers.
City council members, mayor. Uh, for 2020, what I have as of, uh, about two weeks ago, uh, we, for 2020 street repair utility, we had a revised budget of 3.5 million. The actual expenditures were 3 million and 32,000. The amount that, uh, encumbrances or requisitions was 360,000. So what this leaves is, at the end of 2020, about 125,000 left over. And there are still projects that are being, that were, still being worked on at the end of the year. And we're still closing the books through February. So that's where I'm at, about 125,000 at this point.
So my question is, is that the street repair utility and highway user transportation funds go into that money, right?
It's a, yes, the street utility is a, a separate fund, obviously. The, the 2020 budget is about 2.8 million. It's the same amount for 2021.
So how much from, so will 2.8 million from the street repair utility, from the utility fund go towards the 3.3 million?
Well, what Public Works does, and Tony and I worked trying to figure these numbers out because we have basically two buckets, two funds, funding sources, the street utility at 2.8 million and the H U T F, which is about 4 million, 4.8 billion in total. But if you look at the H U T F, there's very specific dollars that are, that are directed towards faster and so forth. And I can, I can look for that, but there are several categories of H U T F. So the point, uh, Chairman Aliff is that they use these two funds in order to try to get the, the streets repaired. So I think your specific question is what dollars come from each, from each respective bucket? I don't have that right at this moment.
You going to get that for us?
Yes.
And send that over. I guess that's because my, I, I guess my thought is you get 2.8 million dollars a year from the street repair utility, roughly?
Yes, sir. Yes.
And then I, I think the H, the, the highway user transportation money was closer to 5 million than it was to 4, right? Off the top of my head?
Well, I'm looking at the 2020 budget, uh, we're about 4.1 million for 2020, 2020. And 2021 proposes 4.9 million. That's on reference H3 in the 2021 budget.
Okay. So 21 would be closer to 5 million. 20 was closer to 4 million?
Yes.
Okay. So I, I guess my point is you get, we get $3 million, 2.8 million dollars from the street repair utility, $4 million from highway user transportation fund, which obviously some of that money goes towards other things.
Yes.
But the reality of it is, is we're not spending any highway user transportation funds or very little when it comes to our streets. If all we did was $3 million worth of street repairs, is that a fair assessment or am I way off?
I, I think it's closer to, I think it's closer to 3 million.
That we used the highway user money?
Yes.
So that would have been 5.8 million dollars for 2020. But we only spent 3 million. You get, you get what I'm, I, I don't expect you to have all, all that right in front of you because obviously I, I sprung this on you. But could you get a breakdown and get it to everybody of exactly where that money?
Certainly. And I, I think what's part, part of what's happened here, sorry, I interrupted you. But if you look at, uh, 2018, I believe in 2019, uh, as Tony said earlier, there were not a lot of street repairs being done at that, at that point. So we had a lot of carryover. And that's also what is maybe looking at the optics here about how much money has been spent. So because we had carryover from previous years that, that came into 2020 and in 2021 as well.
Okay. So the big question for me would be, is how much do we collect a year from the street repair utility fund? How much, how much goes in that yearly? That's the number I would like to see.
It's 2.8 million for the, the street utility fund, 2.8 million. That's how much is collected and we have.
Okay. So if there was carryover from 18 and 19, it was, then it should be three, over 3 million in that fund?
Yes.
So we didn't spend any highway user transportation money on actual street repairs? Because we would have had the money in the street repair utility fund. Is, again, is that a fair assessment?
Yes. And I'm, I'm looking at a printout that I had a couple of weeks ago when I was reviewing this. The 2020 revised budget of H U T F was 9.6, 9.7 million. That's the number that's in our system. Actual for 2020 expenditures was 3 million. So that left us, uh, about 5.6 million. At the end of 2020, we had 1.3 encumbered, spoken for. So at the end of 2020, available is 5.3 million. So I think what, what you, what you put together, your mind is, is, is pretty, pretty, pretty close. Okay? I mean, you've come to that intuitively, I believe.
Well, um, sorry, are you done?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. We, we still had, I, I think, um, a couple of million that was payback for Santa Fe that came out of that fund, correct?
I'm not familiar with that, Counsel.
I think we paid it, we had to pay a million dollars back out of the, uh, street utility enterprise for Santa Fe.
To pay back?
Yes. Yes.
Thanks for the clarification. And at the end of 2018, so the general fund had fronted, if you will, uh, a million dollars and that was reimbursed back.
Okay. And all, and all I'm trying to get to the bottom of is how much highway user transportation funds actually went to street repairs? After the street repair utility paid its, its share? And it seems to be based on the numbers that you won't have to spend any highway user transportation funds on street repairs for 2020 because there was enough money in, uh, in the, uh, street repair utility fund to handle that. So I guess my point being is that we should have enough money to actually do more than we're doing. And we're only doing the, the amount of street repairs that are, 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 are able to be budgeted through the street repair utility and not even touching highway user transportation funds. That's all I'm thinking. If you could get us the real number, I'd be thankful.
I have, I have something to add. I know in prior years that highway user tax fund was used for salaries. That was back when Pacheco was city manager. Um, I, I think it's since been pulled back, but it seems to me like it would be easier and less expensive to contract with one contractor for all of the streets that you plan on doing, rather than bid out one, one street at a time. Um, or have somebody on contract constantly, um, that is doing their street repair and just forget about any kind of city workers, um, doing any kind of milling or, or anything like that when you don't have employees to do it anyway. I mean, it just seems like to make more sense to do it that way.
Well, that's, that's exactly what we've done. We've used the same contractor to overlay all the street repairs last year and we're using the same contractor at the same rate to do all the repairs this year. So, and I don't know whether it's a question of how much work they can do, whether they could do more streets, um, or whether we have more streets ready for them to do in terms of the curb ramps and things like that. But we are using the same contractor to do all the streets.
I mean, if, 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 if a company was contracted out every year and, and given $7 million every year to keep our roads up, um, our roads would be in a lot better shape than they are now. They would do a really great job because a company's motivated to keep renewing their contract, their government contract. I, I just think it's something worth looking at.
Counsel Flores? I just wanted clarification on the H U T C fund. It's my, when I, when I did research on this, when Sam Lazard was still here, he indicated to me that a third of the H U T C fund went for the employees that we, uh, that we hire within that department. And that included their benefits, a whole nine yards. So, you know, and, but again, uh, that, their cost of, of labor is no different than the cost of labor that goes into Martin Marietta. I mean, they have the same, they just happen to be bidding it in a different way. But, uh, to say that all the H U T C fund goes toward purchasing asphalt and concrete is not true. A third of that money goes toward, uh, paying our employees. And I think we have a staff of about 12 to 18 people. I don't remember. It's been a while since I looked at that. I just wanted to clarify that for the record. Thank you. Yeah, the, uh, I agree with what Counsel Flores said. I think that we, we whip this horse a lot in the past and, uh, but, but I want to bring us back to when the budget was, uh, put together for 2020, the mayor specifically. And mayor, you can, you can talk to this if you want, but you specifically said in your presentation to, to the public and to, to us, is that the street, you were going to do X amount of dollars worth of repairs using X amount of highway user transportation fund money. So you were using the highway user tran, part of the highway user transportation fund and all of the street repair utility to come to a dollar amount. That's how I remember it. Am I remembering that incorrectly?
No, you're remembering that correctly. I mean, our plan in 2020 was to spend, uh, $7 million on street repairs. Um, and owing to the late start we got and the fact that we weren't ready to do that, we didn't get that money spent. So yeah, we're, I think we're, we're planning to spend $4 million in H U T F funds in 2020 and plus the three million, the 2.8 million in the, the street refund funds. Yes.
So is that, so, so that goes into what my, my, my question was to Mr. Hernandez. So in 2021, why aren't we using that $3 million that we were going to use in 2020 to do more roads in 2021? For instance, all of Prairie?
No. Well, Prairie's not ready to be done yet. That's, that's the primary, uh, reason. Prairie's not ready to be done yet. And obviously part of that money that we didn't spend on street repairs, um, meant that we took less out of the reserves that we budgeted for in, uh, in 2020. So that's, you, you'll see as, as the, um, the audits done and those kinds of things, that the amount that we predicted we would use out of the reserve fund is a lot less. One of the reasons why is we didn't get as many streets repaired as we wanted to, owing, I think, to the late start that we got and the fact that they didn't even start on that until July. This year they're going to start in April. And I would think if things go well, that it might be that we can come back and add some streets. Uh, you know, it just depends on what the contractor is able to get done, how early a start they can get, what, what the weather's like for them. Um, but I intend to be aggressive about it in terms of, uh, if we can add more streets, we will, just as we tried to do last year and we weren't able to get them done last year. So we're doing it this year. But, um, we're gonna, we're gonna keep pushing on this because this is the number one concern that citizens have when they're surveyed is the condition of our streets. So believe me, we're going to work hard on it. I had a meeting with the new Public Works Director. Today's his first day on the job and indicated to him that, uh, the number one priority for citizens in this community is the street repairs. And I, I think he understands that and that we, you'll see as we move forward, we'll have a, a much more organized plan than we've had in the past.
Thank you for answering my question.
I have one more question.
Counsel Winner?
So, uh, Tony, I have one more question. Um, in that list, how many different contractors, um, did you have on that whole list? I noticed you had Doug Vaughn and how many, how many different contractors are doing those?
You know what? We only have two primary contractors, Doug Vaughn doing the concrete work and the curb ramps, and then Martin Marietta with all the asphalt work. Laurie, you know, when we bid this out originally, the, the differential between pricing was, it was significant. Martin Marietta was 20%, you know, below, um, the next lowest bidder. And... And, you know, it was, it was hard to overlook and, and it's for that reason that we went exclusively, exclusively with them. Obviously, last year, you know, we, we aimed high, but with just the extraordinary events with the COVID and then, uh, we did start late. You know, we, we were able to get our, the primary roads that we had, we had specified, but not the additional ones we added. So, Martin Marietta, they, they're gearing up several crews. You know, they're not just running a single crew. They've got different groups that work at, at different phases of the construction. And, and they're gearing up to be real aggressive. Um, I mean, they think they can, they can finish these roads well before November. But again, just not knowing, um, being realistic about it.
So did you, did you bid, bid out each one of those roads separately?
No, we bid it as a, as a package. Because you made, you made the point earlier and it's, it's 100% accurate that we gain efficiencies and cost, uh, benefits as we add work to that contract. Our, our price for a hundred million tons of asphalt is 20% less than it would be if it was just, you know, 100,000 tons. So, um, you know, we're, we're realizing that advantage.
Okay. Hey, thanks.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Accrey. That was a great report and, uh, thank you for all of the information. Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. You handled that hot seat well.
I don't think he would agree with you.
He's, yeah, he does. Uh, we'll go to number three, a county real estate transaction. I want to welcome, uh, County Commissioner Garrison Ortiz, uh, County Attorney Cynthia Mitchell, County Manager Sabina Janicio, and Assistant County Attorney Gary Rosso. I hope you're all here. Is everybody here? Yeah, I see ya.
Yeah, looks like, uh, all of our team is here on the line. Um, good evening, uh, Council Mayor. Uh, thank you for your time on the agenda this evening. Um, I think that we're here to discuss, um, uh, the Wells Fargo Building, uh, which, uh, the county, uh, currently owns and uh, future use for that space, uh, for both city and county operations. And, uh, just wanted to come here with our team and, um, kind of discuss that and see what ideas you may have.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Ortiz. And I, I asked Commissioner Ortiz and, and his team to come. And there's not anybody here or anybody on this, uh, meeting that doesn't know the, the, uh, position City Council approved a, an ordinance to partner with the county on the Wells Fargo Building. Uh, that deal did not go down. Uh, so for the last few weeks, nothing's been happening on the deal. The, the, the county was, uh, under the belief that we didn't want to be a part of it and that, uh, the deal was dead. There's several of us on City Council, I believe, uh, a solid majority that believes that this is a good deal and that the city needs to move forward with this. And I felt it was important that we all are in the same room, in the same zone and, uh, have a conversation and get this, uh, ball back on, eh, on, in the court and, and move forward. So, uh, I think the way that we need to deal with this is to, to see where we stand as a City Council, if we're still interested in moving forward with this. And this is our time because we have Commissioner Ortiz and his team here to ask any questions that you may feel are, are, are important and, and need to be answered. So, Commissioner Ortiz, if you agree with that, I think that's, uh, how we should, should move on.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I concur. I think this was a preliminary meeting to kind of reopen discussion. Um, I'm, I'd be remiss if I didn't, um, I, I think most of you know, um, we have our County Manager, County Attorney, and, uh, Contract County Attorney, Mr. Rosso here on the line, all of which were pretty diligently on, on this deal and can account for, um, what are the best uses of that space. But yeah, I, I agree, Councilman Aleth, that's, that's, um, I think the intent of the meeting here this evening.
Yes, and I'll just remind everybody, we're not negotiating a deal. We're not trying to, uh, come up with a pricing or anything else like that. We leave that up to the negotiators. What we're trying to do is answer questions and make sure that everybody is on the same page and has the same vision that, uh, the county has in moving forward on this building. Any questions from, uh, Counsel Schilling?
I'll start, and I got more than one, Garrison, and thank you all for, uh, I wish you were here and present, but anyway, thanks for doing the Zoom. Garrison, tell me how you want to see this agreement between you and the city work out. Tell me what your expectations are and your hopes are.
Sure. Um, well, my expectation was that we would have closed on it, uh, in unison, as intended. Um, as was stated, that didn't quite work out. Uh, but my, my hope from here, I, I guess my greatest hope is we, we have a lot of energy and time and resources, uh, many of which, who are on the call, put into the Community Development Task Force to streamline and unify business permitting processes and, uh, uh, fold those into a one-stop physical and virtual shop, uh, which really is, is a huge driver for economic development. So, I, I guess I would say my biggest hope regardless of uh, what we ultimately do, uh, with the rest of the building is that there is full uh, cooperation and, and presence on, on that first floor, first floor of the Wells Fargo Building.
I don't want to hog this. I got more, so why don't you go to Dennis? Counselor, Counselor Flores. Yeah, I, I wanted to, uh, you know, uh, begin by how, you know, it's been my hope all along, and I think it's been the hope of, uh, uh, several of the Commissioners that I've talked to, that, uh, what would benefit not only the community but the county as a whole is trying to, uh, provide an atmosphere in the community of not only cooperation but of teamwork that, uh, we can work together as both the city government and the county government. And, uh, we've done, uh, since I've been on City Council, I've had the opportunity of working on several projects uh, with the Commissioners along with their, uh, legal counsel. And, uh, I believe that in the long run, they've really benefited, uh, the entire county and the city. And when we started talking about the Wells Fargo Building, to me, it was more of a, uh, a symbol, a symbol again of how, you know, working together and putting maybe offices in the same building of, so that the citizens could have a much easier way of dealing with, uh, a lot of their problems without having, uh, you know, to drive all over town to do one, one task to three offices to deal with. So I always thought that that was a, a great idea, especially when it came to uh, the eagerness on both governments, uh, to develop an atmosphere and an environment that was going to be inviting to uh, developers and contractors to increase the potential of economic development and, uh, the generation of additional taxes that we can, uh, uh, generate and, uh, make and improve our, uh, uh, you know, our cities. So I'm still wanting and hoping that we could restart this discussion because I think it's still, uh, a great opportunity for the city, uh, to share in half of that building. And, and I know that there was some concern that if we got involved in a partnership on a real estate deal, that, that potentially there could be a lot of roadblocks, a lot of contention, contentious discussions about, uh, you know, you know, what is going to be used for what. But assuming that we use a condo, office condo approach and everyone can agree to the areas that they're going to occupy, then, uh, each party, both the city and the county have a, eh, eh, an opportunity to have their own autonomy and that, uh, there wouldn't be any conflicts because nobody, the county couldn't tell the city what to do with their part of the building and, and vice versa. So I, I think there's still an opportunity here. I'm all for partnering, uh, not so much partnering, but sharing, uh, the facility 50/50 and creating an, uh, uh, condo office, uh, approach to this. And, uh, because I think, I think it, it does those three things that I think we've all been searching for. The ease of doing business, cooperating, the two governments should be cooperating on a lot of functions uh, because the citizens overlap each other. And, uh, so I'm, I'm hoping that, uh, you agree and that we could, uh, restart the negotiations and, uh, look at this thing from, uh, like I said before, just restarting the discussion. Thank you.
Counsel Brown.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, I look, this is a great opportunity to, uh, for somebody to want to bring, uh, move level forward by having a one-stop shop where you can uh, go to one location and, uh, go through the permitting process. So, I would like to move this forward to, in some respects, I guess I'm not surprised that it fell apart, but I, um, the last, one of the last things I heard that it was moving forward, so. Hopefully, we can work, work out the bugs out of it and, uh, because the citizens are one, ones that are missing out on this. Because there's plenty of parking down there and, uh, so that, that shouldn't be an issue. So it's a great opportunity for the city and county to move forward. Thank you.
Counsel Tencio.
You know, I, I was sold on the concept of having a one-stop shop place where developers and businessmen go to, uh, do their business with the city and county offices and all of the, uh, associated things that they have to do, permitting and everything else like that. So I'm still in on, on the concept of doing that. I always tell my constituents, you know, when we decide that we're going to build a house, that's the big question. What color each room is gonna be could be negotiated later. The idea that the house has to be built first is of paramount, uh, interest to everybody. So in terms of this deal, we're agreed, I think we're agreed, the city and the county, that this one-stop shop for permitting and everything else is a darn good idea. Let's just get to the point where we can, uh, agree on all of the other smaller stuff. And let's get this thing done and, uh, make it better for the city of Pueblo and everybody again.
Counsel Warner.
Yeah, um, this is not a one-stop shop. I don't know why everybody keeps saying that. Um, when you're building in the city, you deal with city planning and zoning and regional building. You're not dealing with the county. When you're building in the county, you're dealing with county planning and zoning. You're not, eh, and regional. You're not dealing with city planning and zoning. This is not going to be everybody singing kumbaya and working together because it's not, does not go together. Um, the last thing you want to own right now is commercial office space. Um, it's, it's the most worthless piece of real estate you can possibly purchase right now. So I'm still with, with, um, Counselor Schilling on that. And, um, if anybody can explain to me how city planning and zoning and county planning and zoning are coordinating together, I would be happy to hear it.
Do you mind if, um, if it's appropriate?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Sure, thank you. Um, Councilman, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Warner, we have a Community Development Task Force and I, I will be sure that you get, uh, an invite to the next meeting and be more than happy to discuss the, the concept. But essentially, when developers come to town, and I can tell you personally, when Pueblo County tried to remodel the old judicial building, uh, we ran into one issue right after the other. In fact, I think that's a perfect example of what we want to see in our community. We want to see buildings in the downtown area uh, remodeled and repurposed. That remodel, because of the intricacies of business permitting, kicked us into a new building code. That costs the citizens an additional one million dollars that it should not have. Uh, that could be for one reason or the other, but I think that illustrates, uh, what is killing projects that we want to see in our community. And it's not just to eliminate the number of
Your judicial building was way over budget because of the cleanup.
Let him finish.
Okay, sorry, sorry.
That's okay. And, and I'll just, I'll just add that it's not simply eliminating, um, the number of steps that somebody has to take when they go to all the various entities on the permitting trail. I, trust me, I personally know it's not as simple as going to city or county zoning. Um, you have to go through, uh, Fire District Utility Sign Off. There are so many entities that are, uh, could arguably work a, a lot more together. And when they work together, that means speed. That means projects get completed months more in advance, less money is burned, and we send a message that the city and county of Pueblo can move your permit through a process in an efficient way. That, that, I, I guess my argument is that is really what's holding us back.
What's really holding you back is you just don't have regional building doing all of it. If regional building would just, is in charge of all of it, like a lot of counties have, you have, uh, one, that is your fast button. When regional, when Pueblo, just call it one Pueblo regional building and they handle all of it. So you're basically getting rid of city, county, uh, city planning and zoning and county planning and zoning. You're dealing with one department, Pueblo Regional Building.
You will never be able to bypass all the other entities that have to give sign.
Uh, well, that, that still, it's, oh my God. Uh, it's, it's, um, the, you know, if you want to talk about the judicial building, I mean, that was seven million dollars in the hole just from a horrible cleanup that Kurgosik was involved in. And you had to, you had to furlough, um, several employees because of that, because of that, that blunder. And, and, um, I, I mean, there's so many other things going on here and, and
Counsel Warner, we need to stick to, to the
But I'm
building. That really has no bearing whatsoever.
Garrison's the one that brought up the judicial being, building being over budget. It was over budget for several reasons. Um, so, you know, I'm gonna lose this one because it's five to two to go forward with this. I'm just voicing what I think of this whole mess.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Flores, I, I just wanted to clarify that something that was said earlier, and that is regional building authority is a partnership between the city and the county. And for some reasons of, uh, uh, that, so that we already have a partnership with regional building authority. So it's not as though it was a separate
No, no, Dennis, what happens is, is you have, um, the city planning and zoning, they'll tell a customer one thing, and then they go to regional and regional says, no, that's wrong. So you have, you have people that work in city planning and zoning and in regional constantly pissing on each other's boots, and that's the problem.
Well, I just wanted to clarify the, uh, the partnership that we have with
Well, it's not, it's not a partnership and it's not, it's not a good situation.
It is a partnership.
Well, the reality, I'm gonna say one thing before I go back to Counsel Schilling. The reality of what we're trying to accomplish here is to fix those people from urinating on their boots. We're trying to fix what's wrong with the community. If you go to big, big communities that are very successful, very successful in community development, whether it be residential or commercial, they have a, a, a system in place that ensures that businesses and homeowners and, and builders and land developers have an easy way to do business with the government. We have an antiquated, out-of-touch, crazy way of doing business in Pueblo, Colorado. To Commissioner Ortiz's benefit, he brings together a group of people and says, hey, this may be a good idea. It may be a good idea to have representatives on the bottom floor of this building who can answer questions, who can get people to the right place, to get people to the second floor rather than five miles away to, uh, another building. It may make sense from a, uh, economic development standpoint, which, which some of us deny that this makes sense. It makes sense for us to have these people in place.
It, it makes no sense at all. You know, regional building
Building, on, on this building. We're not trying to buy this building for commercial space where we're gonna lease out, uh, uh, office suites to anybody that wants to, uh, lease out a space. What we're, what we're proposing is that the county and the city fill up the space. So rather than the city going out and spending $20 million to build a new building for finance and public works and parks and, and transportation and all these different, uh, entities, why can't we have everything in one building? Like a normal government works where they have everybody in one place. And where the consumer, which is our public, can go in and do business in one place. We're not trying to get into the leasing business. What we're trying to do is make Pueblo open for business and to be a better place to do business. That's, and this doesn't, and it doesn't for pennies on a dollar, pennies on a dollar. But yet, uh,
Regional, regional, most of-
Uh, Counselor, I'm not gonna convince everybody of that, but it's my opinion that that's what makes sense. And that's why I'm behind this 110% because I can see the vision. I can see 10 years from now and 15 or 20 years from now, when we're just booming, that this was a good move. It was a good move to do this. And, and we're better off as a community and our community, our citizens are better served by a government that works for them. Uh, Counselor Schilling.
Thank you. And, um, as you probably all know, on the county side, I was one, I am 100% or was. I, I'm gonna lose the buy-in the building part, but I wanna focus on is a couple of things. I've heard some people say there should be all these things, should be this and should be that. But you know, if wishes were horses, biggers would ride. My job as a councilman is to protect the city and make sure that we do the right things. Now, I gotta tell you, I have more experience next with Gary Russell and, and Dan and dealing with the Kenny County from the city side, gentlemen. And yes, everybody's getting along real well right now and everybody's hunky-dory. And we've got, we're all getting along, which is in, in the 14 years or so I've been on council, that's a rarity. And if you don't think that's gonna happen again, and there's gonna be days of mistrust where county commissioners walk out of meetings or they tell their, their constituents complain at the city council because they don't wanna talk to them. You don't think those days are gonna come back, then you're crazy. Now, I don't, what I have a problem with, and realistically, I sent all the council letter from Dr. Whitaker, the realities of coronavirus, we don't need 100% of the space that we've had before. It's obvious, if we're running at, at 25 to 50% of the staff in the city, and as I told Mark one day, it's amazing the power of what you don't hear. What I've not heard is any kind of citizen outrage and lack of service. And maybe some of the other departments can, can tell a different story. Or Nick, maybe you can, but there's been nothing in the paper. There's been nobody at city council during council comments or any of that other time that have shown up to complain. My concern is the city gets sucked in to buy in half that building and we don't need it. I'm afraid a decision might be made, we need to fill it instead of making the right investment, knowing, no, we don't need all this space. So Commissioner, Commissioners and attorneys from the county, I think us buying half of that space is nuts. And I, you, you may find you don't need it all. So if we only need, and that, I think you'll find if you'll go on and check and Garrison, you've been to grad school, you're smarter than probably most of us. If you go online and find out what the expectations are of not necessarily needing to have everybody in the office at one time, I think that becomes pretty paramount on how much, how much we need. And I, I, I'm afraid that people are gonna blow past this and, and get fill it up because, oh, that's part of our agreement, we need to do this. It's kinda like buying four couches for a house and maybe you only need two. Um, and then you all tried to get us involved in, uh, and I appreciate you listening to me. Uh, you tried to get us all involved in signing the contract, knew all the attorneys, and there was nothing spelled out on who got what or who did what. And I was stunned that it was even proposed when nobody knew what the weeds are. Now, somebody mentioned the weeds, the rooms and the colors of that. That's true, that's gonna, you know, I think that a lot of weeds need to be brought before all of us together to know exactly how this is gonna go down. My experience, and you can blow it off or not, but I'm telling you, it's real, that sometimes agreements get, get made and then people back out. Well, you agreed to do this with the janitor service. Well, you know what? We don't wanna do it anymore. There was a new election and we wanna pick somebody else. So I, I, I really wanna protect the councils and commissioners down the road, the 10 years that Mark's talking about, 20 years. Let's just make real sure that we're, know what we're doing and make sure, please, Mayor and everybody else, we only take the space we need and not think the real estate professionals and commercial people are nuts. Because I think you'll find out that we're gonna probably not, if we're getting by with 25 to 50%, and again, unless, and I've not heard anybody raise their hands and say, boy, I've heard a lot of complaints from the citizens how things are running. Um, I'm wondering why we would, by any means, would wanna take even half of that building. And I hope we would do a study to make sure we know exactly how much of that building we need. In the worst case, we're wrong. I don't wanna be in the leasing business. And, and I believe that it'd be better for us to take less and then if we need another hundred square feet of office space, we'll come get it from the county. I want you guys to be in the leasing business. I don't want us to be. And I don't think we can fill that whole building with everybody in there and taking a realistic view of the co- covenant thing. And you might all think I'm nuts, but I'm real darn serious about, don't, don't overtake what we don't need. And thank you for your time.
Mayor Gradisov, do you have anything?
Yeah, I mean, I've listened to all the council comments. Um, and let me, let me say that I think there's an advantage to having the city and county departments located in the same building that do similar work. Having them in one place, I think that's attractive. Um, you know, I think this is an attractive building from the city's perspective. We have city departments scattered out all over. Um, many of them in buildings that we're gonna have to spend a considerable amount of money remediating in order to, uh, keep up with standards and make them ADA compatible, which is why this building was attractive to me. Uh, and we have spent a considerable amount of time on the city, inspecting the building, the layouts of the building, trying to determine what space we would, uh, utilize and what we would utilize it for. Uh, we had plans to move, you know, 12 departments, 165 employees into that building. I think that's still a good plan. But the reason that I didn't close is because the sellers would not give us that extension we needed to put the ownership documents together. I've been involved in enough of these deals to know that you have to know what the deal is going, going into it. Um, and I'll, I'll just throw out an example. You know, it's a complicated deal, but it's not impossible and the politics don't have to get into it. The Twin Lakes Company operates Twin Lakes Reservoir. It's owned by the City of Aurora, the Pueblo Board of Waterworks, Colorado Springs, and some private investors. They operate that reservoir, uh, as a entity separate and apart from, um, all those municipal governments. We can do the same thing with this building. We just have to get it set up so that we know, uh, how much is the county gonna own? How much is the city gonna own? What is the joint space? How much of it's gonna be joint space and how's that joint space gonna be utilized? Those are things that can be done pretty easily. And I think once they are done and once they're agreed to, that the disputes in the future will be, uh, minimal. It will have a building that operates itself. Both the city and the county will dominate a board of directors or appoint a board of directors in some fashion. And that board of directors will handle this like a business transaction. That's what I think we need to do to move forward. Um, we, I think, got some documents from the Colorado counties had used for a building they had, uh, up north and said, hey, let's start here and see if this makes some sense. We didn't get into who wanted how much space. Um, and obviously, I don't wanna be in the leasing business on this building and only wanna take what the city would use. And if the county wants to lease their part out because they don't, uh, wanna use all of it for, for county employees, I think that's, you know, perfectly appropriate and up to them. That wouldn't really have any effect on us because we'd have that operating agreement that says, this is how the expenses of the building are gonna be allocated. This is how decisions are gonna be made, be made with respect to the building. All those decisions don't have to come back to the Board of County Commissioners or to the city council in terms of, you know, who we're gonna hire to do the janitorial service or how's that gonna be taken care of. That'll be done by that association or that organization that operates the building. So I think that that's the way to do it, but it needs to be done before, you know, the city takes an ownership interest in it. And if the county is willing to go along those lines and say, okay, let's work on that, then I think we can get it done. Whatever disputes we have, we'll get them agreed to or not agreed to before we get into it. Um, and we won't have to worry about it afterwards. We'll get those documents agreed to and it'll, it'll sort of maintain itself as we move forward.
I, I would just like to, to add one, one thing to that, if I may. Um, you know, I talked a little bit about this business permitting project, uh, with the city and the county on the first floor. You know, I, I would say that that is, um, while it is part of the Wells Fargo building, it is an independent issue. So regardless of our ability to move forward with a joint city-county building, um, you know, I, I, I think that is within the realm of possibility, period. I'll also say that we would have never taken full ownership or assignment of this building if we didn't know that we could put the entire building to use, sell off other buildings, centralized services, and ultimately have a better bottom line operationally and be in the black on the whole deal by far. Um, and, and I know that for a fact and I don't need to go into depth to justify that. But in the spirit of city-county cooperation, which is really how this project, um, originated, that's kinda why we're here, regardless of what unfolded how or uh, what, what some thoughts may be, the, the, I think this has the potential to really be a landmark when it comes to city-county cooperation. And ultimately, what matters is, is how we can serve the citizens more efficiently at the end of the day. And if we can come to an agreement to sort that out, and I can take that back to my board and we can figure that out, that's terrific. And if not, we can put that entire building to good use and save the taxpayer money on the county side. Um, so we're, we're prepared to do either and we, but we do appreciate and, and really want to have good city-county cooperation on this.
So what I hear Commissioner Ortiz is you want a commitment from city council and the mayor's office on the bottom floor uh, for the, uh, what, what is it called? What are we gonna call it?
We, we haven't named it yet.
That's why I can't think-
Yeah, but it's, it's a one-stop shop for business permitting. It'll be-
Yeah, one-stop shop.
Yeah.
And, uh, so the premise is whether the city goes into that building or not, you want the city to have representatives on the bottom floor, uh, to be able to address development concerns from the citizens, correct?
Uh, uh, yes, absolutely.
And that's, that's a biggie. That's a biggie that we need to get done no matter what.
Right.
Yeah. Uh, I'll just poll the counselors or, and see who's in support of that. Uh, Counselor Flores.
Uh, yeah, as I, as I mentioned earlier, uh, I really would like, uh, you know, first of all, we, we did give, uh, the mayor the ability to, uh, negotiate, uh, and also to finalize all the documents that he feels he needs. So the mayor already has our authority, uh, but I am a, a hundred percent behind us moving forward and getting this done. I really, uh, would like us to, uh, to be, uh, have owners of that building as we had originally envisioned. Thank you.
Counselor Schilling.
Mark, you asked a very specific question him, hit of him. Do you want us to make a decision on taking just the first floor? Is that what you're-
No, it's that, having representatives on the first floor.
Oh, okay. So it didn't do it buy or sell or lease, it only is now to do it-
It's a commitment to say that we're committed to the premise of this, uh, this Pueblo initiative to have a one-stop shop for-
To, you, to commit to the first floor deal and like and have people in the city and the county there.
Yes.
Has nothing to do with lease or cost or anything else. I'm all for that. Thank you.
Uh, Counselor Brown.
Yeah, I'm for it.
Counselor Tensio.
Yeah, I'm for that also. But I'm also with Councilman, uh, Flores in that we have to pursue the, uh, the other part.
I'm, I'm just trying to take care of one thing at a time. One thing- Counselor Winter, on the first floor, you good with that or not?
So, uh, again, I, I'm telling you it's okay to put city planning and zoning representative on the first floor.
Correct.
I mean, that's ridiculous. If, if we don't have an agreement on the building that, um, I mean, I don't-
So you'd be against it.
I don't, I don't understand what, what we're doing here, you know? Okay, let me, let me just ask the, the mayor, he, he probably knows this, but regional building hardly has anybody enter their office because it's all done online. The city just spent how much money, Nick, did the city just spend so that city planning and zoning could tap in to regional buildings, um, uh, computer
Several hundred thousand.
How much?
Several hundred thousand, several hundred thousand dollars.
Several hundred thousand dollars. Do we know exactly how much is, uh?
I don't know exactly how much, uh, but I mean, it is still a work in progress. I mean, we're still working on it. Hopefully it's gonna be live pretty quick.
Does Hernandez know how much we spent on that?
I doubt if he knows off the top of his head.
He does know.
Because that's the reason that we did that, so that people didn't have to come to the meeting. They could do every, I mean, it, come in person. They could do everything.
Well, no, that's not exactly the reason. I mean, there's still gonna have to be that interactive-
Fast button right there. I mean, you're doing everything online. And, and, um, uh, you know, there's, there's businesses out there that are giving their employees $700 up to $2,000 to put home offices in their home. Because that's where the future is going. And Bob is absolutely correct about that.
Well, let me just say, let me just say, Councilman Aleph, with respect to the first floor, that to my mind, it makes a lot of difference about whether we can do that or not, if we've got those, that, that employee's department on the floor up above. For instance, I think it could be problematic if we have to take somebody out of a planning department who, um, and we have to staff two places. We gotta have still somebody dealing with the public, maybe in the planning department, but dealing with the public on the first floor of the Wells Fargo building versus if we, we've got that department in that building so that staff is available, you know, there. I mean, it makes it more likely to me that, um, that, that one-stop shop is possible if, if the department, uh, departments are there, rather than just having an, um, an isolated employee there that might change from time to time. And that might not have access for whatever reason to the computer systems that they need for the city. I mean, those are all the kinda things that we were working through and exploring the purchase of this building is how do we, how do we get that all, all those kinda systems set up. And it's a lot easier for us to do that, I think, if we've got a, a portion of that building that, that we own. But, um, I, I think, so I, I think the county has to decide, do you wanna try to work out a deal where the city buys a, a portion of the building? We're not. Um, and if you do, let's, let's try to do it.
I believe, and I'm not speaking for Ca- Commissioner Ortiz, but I believe that he's here to, to, uh, to open that door again. And it's time for us to either, uh, get into the game or get out of the game. So the, the whole intent of this meeting was to get the questions answered and to get this thing moving forward. And I guess my question to Commissioner Ortiz would be is how would you like us to move forward and, and approach the, the, uh, commissioners? How, how do you, how do you want to see this move forward?
Sure. Um, it, it, we wouldn't be here if we weren't interested in, in selling floors to, to meet your office needs. Um, I, I really wanna see city and county cooperation fostered. Uh, I have a, a board that, you know, we'll have to pull together, so I'm, I'm just one of three. But I will say that if we can have and resurrect the discussions for the use of the space, meet on a weekly basis and try to sort something out, um, you know, I, I think that's a good path forward if there's, if there's support for that.
Well, I think the city council would support that. I mean, it's not gonna be unanimous, but I, I think there's support from the city council to do that. Certainly, I support that avenue.
I'd like to offer up, I'd like to offer up that, that I think that it's very important moving forward, that city council is represented somehow in those negotiations or in those meetings. Uh, someone from city council needs to be involved in that is just my, uh, just my, um, my belief.
Well, aren't you involved in that one?
Is who involved?
Aren't you a part of that team?
I'm a part of the task force. I'm not a part of any negotiations or
Oh, I see.
Getting in on negotiations or anything like that.
Well, it'd probably be Larry then.
We just
That would be Larry.
Councillor Flores would 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 be a part of that if he but I think we need the mayor to agree to that. We need the county commissioners to agree to that.
I think our president should be be doing the negotiations. I mean, you know, Larry's the one, you know, I have to tell you, Larry contacted.
With we're all okay, whether it's the president, whether it's councillor Shilling, whether it's councillor Flores.
I don't think I don't think I have to say I don't think Flores is a very good communicator. I mean, we didn't have very good communication when he was president and Larry Larry's already Larry has already proven that he's communicating already, so I would say Larry.
I'd ask the mayor. Mayor, can we get the council president involved with you?
Sure, absolutely.
Can two council be involved? Maybe one officially, one unofficially.
One to get
I'm the only devil's advocate on this group, you guys. And doing something.
What about me? What about me, Shilling?
I'm gonna let the president, he'll tell us what to do. I'll go with that. But I do have one last comment, though. Seems to me, Mayor, that our whole homework, the first thing to do is figure out exactly how much space is needed before anything else is done. Thank you.
Well, councillor Shilling, he's already said they've already done the homework and they need a they have one hundred and sixty employees. They want to move over to the building.
Mayor, did you take into consideration any of the COVID effect?
Well.
Figure in bringing everybody over.
Well, we've figured on bringing everybody over. I mean, the COVID effect, you know. Yeah, I haven't really thought seriously about do we want to pay employees to use part of their house to do work for the city? Is that the wave of the future? I'm not ready to go there yet. You know, I can't wait to get everybody back in the office once COVID is done. Now, how long that's gonna take, I don't know, but I'm not prepared to say that we're going to, you know, keep twenty five percent of our workforce or fifty percent of our workforce working from home. It's not gonna be very long that, you know, they'll want to be compensated for that.
Well, I haven't read a lot of reports about needing compensation for working from home, but anyway, what's gonna happen is gonna happen. Thanks.
Well, obviously, at the end of this, there's gonna be a contract that comes back to city council if a deal can be made and city council is gonna have to approve it or disapprove it and and go through the weeds and decide whether it's a good deal or a bad deal. We're not in the negotiation process now. So the way that I I'm I'm understanding this is that we're gonna open negotiations back up. The mayor and his team accompanied by city council president will reach out to the county commissioners and get this ball rolling again and meet on a weekly basis. Is that how you understand it, Commissioner?
Yes, that's that's my understanding and sounds like a good path forward.
I just I just wanted to make one comment how councillor Winner, who is totally against this, can kind of move me out of the way just just by saying that I.
You know, Dennis, I you know, I just thought you were a a poor communicator. I mean, it was mentioned several times during the year.
We don't have to do this.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is that
I understand.
You know, how is it that she can make one comment, a negative comment about any councillor member? And all of a sudden, I'm not the representative, which
That's because everybody probably agrees with me, Dennis.
I think that's a valid point, and I think that what we have to do as a council is is have council president decide how that how that's gonna go down. It's not my choice, obviously, to appoint somebody from city council to be a part of that. So I think the correct protocol is is that is that we don't specifically name tonight council president as the negotiator, as the person gonna be in in negotiations, but we will ask the council president to appoint some himself or someone to do that. Is that fair enough? Okay. Commissioner Ortiz, do you have anything else?
Yeah, I just want to say that, you know, as I stated, the the project on the first floor is is really important. I'll be sure to do some more outreach and you know, do my best to go over the concept or or what the possibilities may be or or take feedback. But I I also want to say, as the mayor had mentioned, you know, there is a lot of work that went into this this deal even up until this point, and I think we're happy, you know, to resurrect those conversations in the spirit of city county cooperation. And I also want to say that, you know, I want to commend, you you know, the county team, most of which on is on the line here, not all, but, you know, to really come up with, you know, two point five million with in twenty four hours, you know, that that was tough. And take ownership and carry that over and, you know, they've they've done a wonderful job and and I think they'll do a wonderful job and we'll work together and we'll try to figure this out. And I also wanted to say I'd be remiss if I didn't say, you know, thoughts and prayers from us at the county to councillor Maniguleta and appreciate the time to to present tonight, and and I'll be reaching out for some of the questions that were asked.
Thank you, Commissioner Ortiz. We appreciate you, and thank you and your team for coming tonight.
Thank you. Have a good night.
I'll move into number four, which is loan forgiveness discussion. Mayor Gradisar.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. Just by a little bit of background, you'll recall that when COVID hit, we immediately got the city council and Fedco to make available to businesses and nonprofits in the community five million dollars of our half cent sales tax money and have utilized that and some other funds to give good economic relief to those businesses. In total, about five point six million dollars has been distributed. Of that, about three hundred and twenty one thousand was given to forty one businesses for dining amenities. Cash grants from the CARES Act. We made nine hundred and ninety three thousand one hundred and eighteen dollars in grants there. Cash grants from the half cent sales tax. We made two point nine four two million dollars available to three hundred and seventy nine businesses in cash grants from the from the half cent sales tax fund. And in terms of loans, we made thirty eight loans out of the half cent sales tax fund, totaling one point one million four hundred and twenty seven thousand five hundred dollars. Four of those loans were made to nonprofits and they totaled one hundred and eighty five thousand dollars. Those nonprofits were the Pueblo Arts Alliance for ten thousand dollars, the Pueblo Zoo for seventy five thousand dollars, Sangre de Cristo Art Center for seventy five thousand dollars, and the Steel City Theater for twenty five thousand dollars. The question has arisen with respect to how do we want to proceed from here? With respect to the private recipients of the loans, with respect to the nonprofit recipients of the loans. We've been approached by some of the nonprofits to say, are you giving any consideration to forgiveness of these loans? Because we are, you know, we're a venue, we're still obviously affected by COVID. The repayments are scheduled to begin, I think, in April or May there, and it's a five year repayment period that that they have. And Dan, I've forgotten whether we charged them any interest at all or whether it's a zero interest rate. Do you remember?
Mayor, we charged one percent interest, but that was going to be paid not initially, but over the five year repayment period.
Right, right.
We deferred interest for the first year.
Okay.
And loaded the one percent into the five year repayment schedule.
Right. So what I wanted to discuss with the council was, what are your thoughts about that? And we can split them up if you like in terms of the for profit individuals and companies that got loans versus the nonprofit individuals and companies or nonprofit organizations, not there weren't any nonprofit individuals. But for the Pueblo Arts Alliance, the Pueblo Zoo, the Sangre de Cristo Arts and Conference Center, the Steel City Theater, do you want to consider them separately? Have you given any thought or consideration to saying, you know, we'll we'll turn those loads in loans into grants since you use them for your facility and you're still in the middle of COVID? So I just wanted to have that discussion and start that conversation because those specifically the nonprofits have started those conversations with me. And obviously, any decision has to be made by the city council with respect to this. And I think Dan has some ideas and thoughts about about the considerations that you need to take in 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 making the decision. Dan, do you want to weigh in a little bit?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We have to remember that these are taxpayer funds. And council has the authority to forgive these debts and also has the authority to convert them to grants. But you just can't do that arbitrarily. There has to be what we lawyers call a predicate, a a evidentiary finding, a factual finding that these nonprofits are unable to make the make the payments. If they can't make the payments as demonstrated by their application for conversion to grants or for forgiveness of the debt, then you certainly can do that. But it really has to be on a case by case basis. And there there has to be a showing that the loans cannot be repaid. Same would apply to commercial loans that we made. You have the right to convert to grants or to cancel the debt. But there has to be a factual predicate. There has to be an evidentiary record supporting that action.
Is that your report?
Yes.
Councillor Flores. Mayor Gradisar, I wanted to take us back to when we took the money out of the half cent sales tax. It seems to me that at that point, we didn't have much evidence back then that we would be able to recoup any of this from the federal CARES Act. And that the whole premise of either the grants or the loans was the ability of the city of Pueblo to salvage the jobs and maybe keep these businesses going. So that, you know, it from the very beginning, our our total focus was really to try to save the employment to these businesses and and also help them with, you know, other costs that they're going to incur with the reduction in the amount of customers that they have. And that seems to fall in line with how we have loans in the past or provided a subsidy to a lot of businesses that relocate in in Pueblo to to create new jobs and make sure that they stay here. So that, I mean, that's the approach that we have, and this was such an unusual situation that it seems to me that's what we were intending to do. Could you can you take us back to the very beginning and confirm that what I'm thinking there is correct or whether you had expected that maybe we were gonna get money from the feds to to reimburse the fund?
No, I think at the time we set up this program and at the time these funds were dispersed, the federal CARES Act had not been passed. And it wasn't for long after that, I think sometime in the summer that we actually learned that we could request reimbursement from those federal CARES funds for the grants, not from the loans. So none of these loans have been submitted to the CARES Act for for reimbursement, but we did it because it was the right thing to do. We had the money available in the half cent sales tax fund and it was clear that our businesses were gonna be devastated by the stay at home order. And we wanted to make sure that when that stay at home order was lifted, they were able to get back up and running as quickly as possible because they generate sales tax for the city of Pueblo. Now, with respect to these four nonprofits, they haven't been able to get up and running as quickly as possible because saving except the arts alliance, maybe they're they're sort of venues, you know, that require visitors. And as you know, that's still in this age of COVID, very, very restricted, so they haven't been able to do that. But when we gave these loans out, when we gave the grants out, we had no expectation that they would be reimbursed by the CARES Act at all.
Thank you. I had a, you know, my my first thought is that on the nonprofits, and maybe we should break this up between the nonprofits and for profits, that that I I personally would be willing to forgive the loans to the nonprofits and there are did we decide there was four?
Four, yes.
And just just to get that one out of the way and just see how the council thinks about the nonprofits, because they're they're kind of unique. They don't have the ability of for profit to have done anything other than just kind of wait this thing out, and they're the ones that probably got hit hardest. And if we could break this up into two sections, at least we could eliminate that and then start talking about the for profit businesses.
Well, and I might just add with respect to the nonprofits and the art center specifically, I know, took that loan and made improvements to the the art center, put that money back into the community almost immediately by getting painters, having new carpet put in, those kind of things, buying some local supplies and putting some local people to work. That's the one I know for sure did that. I would expect, obviously, that the Pueblo Zoo used that to keep their animals alive while they were there.
Councillor Shilling.
Thanks, Mark. I'm with Dennis. I'm all for the the nonprofits. They're never gonna be able to make that money back. And the term is nonprofit, so just kind of makes sense to forgive and I'm but I'm a no on forgiving the businesses that have the opportunity to make this comeback or be able to come back and pay us back. So to try and keep this simple in two categories, I'm a yes on the nonprofits and if you're asking for forgiveness on the business, I'm a no on that one. That's it. Thanks.
Councillor Winner.
Well, I didn't I didn't think we were discussing businesses. I thought we were only discussing for nonprofits, correct?
Well, I think it's all on the table for discussion.
Oh, okay. Well, um the zoo, I consider that part of the city. I I mean, I know it's a nonprofit, but it's city run. I would definitely be for that. What I would like to see are probably financials from the other three, just to see that they were a successful business prior, successful businesses or successful nonprofits prior to COVID. And then an also thing, another thing we could consider is just an extension on the payments. Maybe allow them to start paying in January or something instead of April. But I would I would like to see that they were a successful prior to COVID. But definitely, definitely the zoo.
Councillor Brown.
Yes.
Councillor Tencio.
I I took to heart what Mr. Gogosik told us about these organizations justifying their getting the loan in the first place. I guess another one of my questions would be the commercial people, did they get grants and then a loan on top of the grants? If we forgive the grant, the loans after giving them a grant, then basically they're double dipping and I wouldn't want to what we're doing is putting the rest of the commercial people that we gave grants to and not loans, putting them putting them at a disadvantage. Do that. So I think I would go with what Mr. Gogosik said. And these people could come in and justify why they believe that we should be able to forgive that loan, and I don't have a problem doing that at all, but I don't see anything wrong with them coming in justifying why they should get the loan forgiven.
Are you talking about the nonprofits?
Nonprofits.
Okay.
Yeah. No, the the, like I said, the commercial people I'll bet a dime to a dollar that they got a grant and then on top of that got a loan. I I can't see them double dipping getting another grant.
Thank you. Mr. Gogosik, does city council? Mr. Kugosik, does city council have the power to defer payments for any period of time?
Yes, the, uh, each of the loans that, uh, came from the half cent fund. They, they're promissory notes and we, we can amend those notes, uh, to, uh, provide for a new payment schedule. Or, you know, if there's a proper evidentiary record, you know, we, we can forgive those promissory notes. Provided that they. They make a full disclosure. I mean, if it's a nonprofit, I think it's fair to ask for their Form 990. Uh, if it's a for-profit business, I think it's fair to ask for their tax returns. Which we would, of course, keep confidential.
I hear you. I'm going to ask the mayor a question. I, when these, when these loans were given out. There was a committee that was in place that looked at every application. Am I correct on that? And this approved them. Tell me the process. They approved the loan and it came to you and you signed the check?
Yes.
Okay, so based on the information that they gave to the group that, uh, was looking at the applications. Before they approved a hundred thousand dollar loan, they probably, uh, uh, had figured that they had the ability to repay the loan. Is that correct? Or else we wouldn't have gave them the loan, right?
I think that's fair. I think that's fair. Yeah.
I mean, you weren't loaning money to people who had absolutely no ability to pay us back. That's the point of the whole program, right?
Right, correct.
So my problem with this is, is that every, every single taxpayer, well, I'm stretching there. The majority of taxpayers who go out and get loans pay their loans back. No matter what it is, when they borrow money, they have to pay it back. When these nonprofits came to the city to, they, they got, they could have got the grants. I don't know who got the grants, who didn't get the grants. But they knew when they signed a contract for a loan that there was absolutely a responsibility to repay. The taxpayers, the money that they received. So I understand that COVID is still going on and they weren't, and, and many of these have not been able to open up, uh, to full strength or any strength. And, and at this point, if you're talking about Janu- or February first of twenty twenty-one. They may not have the ability to start making the payments on their loans. But by no stretch of the imagination should, should we shirk our responsibility to the taxpayer and say. That, uh, we're going to forgive these loans and forever. I think that we ought to look at deferment, uh, based upon need, a deferment for six months, a year. Heck, two years for that matter. I, I don't know what it is. And, and give the, this economy a chance to open back up and get these people making money. But they owe the taxpayers, they owe the citizens of the city of Pueblo that money. And for us to say any different is, 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 is wrong in my eyes. Not to mention that just because they're a nonprofit. They got a loan just like, uh, uh, Joe Blow got a, a, a loan for his business. He has to repay his loan because he borrowed the money from the citizens. From, from the taxpayers of the city of Pueblo. The nonprofit should not be any different than that. And that's my opinion. And I, you know, uh. I think that we ought to seriously look at deferments on a case-by-case base basis. Without just carte blanche saying, I'm gonna, I'm gonna forgive a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars worth of loans.
All right, how about this? Why don't we, uh, reach out to these four nonprofits at least and ask them to provide us some documentation in writing? With respect to their ability or desire to pay it back and, um. Whether they would, uh, seek a deferral or something like that. We'll draft a letter to them and ask them. In the next thirty days or so to get back to us and then we'll share that information with you and revisit this. Is that acceptable?
Is that acceptable to everybody? It is to me. I just wanted to make one comment and that is we can't forget that we, you know, when, when we bring in a new business in town. Through our absent sales tax, we are forgiving a lot of their debt. You don't want to call it that, but we do. We, we give probably close to fifteen thousand per job. And, uh, so if they, if they, uh, need the half a million dollars worth of, uh, equipment, they borrow half of that. And then we, we contribute the other half. So in a way, in a backwards way, we are forgiving certain loans. But, uh, the other thing I wanted to mention is the art center, the zoo, and even the Arts Alliance. They're, they're really quasi, um, government agencies that really. Everything they do is for the enhancement, the enhancement of the community. And so, uh, and there's only four, four of them. So, but I have no problem with them justifying. Cause I think they're going to have a good story and justifying the fact that they've been shut down. And, uh, so, but I, I'd be willing to wait to hear what their, uh, story is. All right, Nick, I got a question for you. Are they the only ones, businesses or nonprofits that are saying we need some relief? Or have there been any businesses come to you and, and say, you know, we're not making it, we don't know how we're going to make that payment or has it just been the nonprofits?
Well, no, I think we've got some calls from some businesses, um, that have inquired about, have you given any consideration to, um. Turning these loans into grants or not making us pay it back. Um.
Like, is it?
They're starting to look at it now because the repayment time is coming up and wondering whether we're going to send them loan coupons and those kind of things. You know, how we're going to do this.
I guess I'm trying to ask, are we expecting any kind of flood? Are those questions?
From the private, uh, companies?
Yes.
Well, I'm not going to send it out to the private companies. I wouldn't go, I wasn't planning to send it out to all those loan recipients, only to the nonprofits.
Question in general, is there anything so far showing you that there may be a trend where they're not going to be able to make their payments?
I, uh.
Didn't mean it to be a hard question. You can get back.
Well, I'm just looking at the list. I'm just trying to look at the list a little bit here. You know, obviously some of them use these monies, I think, to make some improvements to their businesses and we're going to generate money for them, but upgrades, um. Nobody suggested to me that they're not going to be able to pay it back though. No, I guess that's the quick answer.
That's a great answer. Thank you.
Counselor Atencio.
Just a thought, these nonprofits, uh, we may make them pay the, uh, loan back. But six, nine months from now, they're going to be coming back asking us for money to put because their, their budgets are in the red. So, uh, six of one, half a dozen of the other guys. And then, uh, uh, as far as the commercial businesses, if, uh, they really run into a lot of trouble and they're not able to pay back. I say we can revisit that at a later time.
Okay, so Mayor, you're going to get back to us and, uh, get us the information. Does anybody have anything else?
Just, just a thought, just a thought. Somebody yesterday, just yesterday told me, so half of your, uh, bureaucrats that are working for the city are working from home in their pajamas. Taking two-hour naps in the afternoon and we're still paying them. So if one person told me that yes, yesterday, I guarantee you a few more people are going to start asking. What's important is, is the work getting done, bottom line.
Well, it's not half the people working from home either, but I hear you.